My dad won't be home until late night, so I'm coming too. I hope that's alright with you guys, I hope. That's fine with us. They'll be glad to see a bunch of young people there. The average age will plummet. Ha 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 ha. I want to say hi to Uncle Kimi Yoshi too, I haven't seen him in awhile. Still thinking back on chapter 7. Miyaka... Chapter 5. Miyakashi. Where Shion stabbed Satoko to death, electrocuted you, shoved you down a well, broke your neck. Had a fight with a taser of you where you stabbed your own throat out to avoid being tortured by her. Who then later pretended to be her. Went after Keiji. But yeah, you also killed Oriu with the taser. Though to be fair, you didn't want to kill her yet, you wanted to torture her for a bit, but you didn't expect the elderly person to die from an electrocution. And, well, you did Uncle Kimi Yoshi. You did sort of hang him by a way where he slowly suffocated over the course of two days while in excruciating pain. While screaming at him a lot. He also got electrocuted a few times too. We all headed toward the Farude Shrine in the dim light. The light was on in the assembly building, some people had already arrived. Good evening. You guys are early. Then again, another timeline, you did strangle Shion to death. With your hands around her throat. Hello Mion Chan and her friends. Good evening Dr. Eri. Good evening. You're here early. Ha 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 ha, we don't have anything else to do. More people started coming into the meeting hall. Everyone seemed to come so early. I should probably come earlier from now on too. I thought I saw a lot of fashionable shoes at the entrance today. There are lots of young people here. Shion Chan. It's been so long, what brought you here today? Everyone bowed to the newest arrival, it was the mayor, Kimi Yoshi-san. He strode into the room with the other committee members. Hello, it's been awhile. I was hanging out with my sis and just happened to come along with them. Is that so? Well, you're welcome here. You're coming to the Watanagashi Festival this year, right? Yes, I'm going this year for sure. I want to see K-Chan hosting the auction too. Wahahaha, I guess it's time for young people like you to take over the festival. By the way, I wanted to talk to you, Mion Chan. Chan, can you come this way? Fine, what is it? Is that guy from the refreshment booth's team still angry? Ah, well. Mion headed outside with Kimi Yoshi-san and the other committee members. There's only one room in the building, so they have to go outside if they want to talk in private. Today is Thursday, so we have only three more days until the festival. Are you ready for the auction? There's not much that I can do now. I'm ready to get up on the stage and do my thing though. I think Keiji performs best under pressure. Everyone laughed. We continued to chat about the festival, we talked about what kind of festival young people like us would want to see, that sort of stuff. Suddenly, Mion tapped me on the shoulder. K-Chan? I need you for a second. Sure thing, but you look, seem to look very serious. Mion, I hope everything's okay? She gestured for me to follow her out the front without letting the others know. What did she want? Metal Gear Keiji. Once outside, I see Mion, Chiye Sensei, and the principal. Oh, Chiye Sensei, Mr. Principal. Hmm, anyone remember how Tepe was going on about how much he wishes that he could beat the fucking shit out of Chiye? I feel like I don't respect him for that. That and the, you know, the beating and raping of Satoko, that's, that's also not good. Good evening. Chiye Sensei responded to my greeting, but the principal must not have heard me since he didn't. His eyes were closed, he seemed lost in thought. That sight caused our happy, chatty feelings to glow up quickly. My intuition told me this had to be about something bad. I need to talk to you, Maburo-kun. Of course, but the way everyone's looking at me has to be very concerned. That doesn't sound good. Are you going to the Child Consultation Center again tomorrow? Yes, we'll keep fighting till they save Satoko, that's our mission. I don't know if we'll get as many supporters as we did today, but we're going back there again, right Mion? Maburo-kun? I know you've already made plans for tomorrow, but after that, I think you should wait and see what they do. Why? Thanks to the advice from Oishisan last night, they'd already had an idea of the situation. Is this a warning, Chiye Sensei? If our protest grows any bigger, the village officials will have to take notice of it. That's why you're telling me to quit now, isn't it? Maburo-kun, I think what you're doing is a good thing. You're not wrong to pursue the things you believe in, however... She stopped talking after that, Chiye Sensei was supporting us until just yesterday. She even came to the Child Consultation Center with us on the second day. Hmm. Are the higher-ups on the Board of Education pressuring you and the principal? Are you being threatened with being fired? So for her to start saying completely the opposite, I felt slightly dizzy from the shock of it. K-Chan, let me explain in her stead. Chiye Sensei is still supporting us as an individual, but the school system is telling her she's not allowed to as a teacher. Her job, however, well, is she being pressured by the Board of Education or something? Chiye Sensei will never bow to pressure. You have no idea how courageous she is. Well, I'm not insulting her, I'm just wondering what's happening. She ignored the Board of Education, came to this village when the Hinamizawa Branch School was still not approved by the government. I think Mion told me about that story before. The school was closed when the dam conflict happened. However, the village children still came to the school to learn. There were no teachers there though, because the school wasn't officially operating. That was when Chiye Sensei arrived. After they won the dam conflict, the Sonosaki from the other villagers made an appeal, and the school's existence was finally approved. Our school did not have an easy start. The government was against it, but the villagers forced them to approve. Chiye Sensei came along with us on our appeal yesterday. That was very courageous of her, but now people who want to close the school are paying attention to what we're doing. That's basically it. Chiye Sensei can't support us openly anymore. Chiye Sensei stared at the ground as Mion spoke. Chiye, I know you're still gonna feel bad about this either way, but I don't blame you for this, and I still appreciate you came on the day that you did. And I understand your circumstances, so I appreciate everything that you can do, and I understand that I've already asked a lot of you. I do not blame you in any way, shape, or form, though I know you'd probably still blame yourself. I'd never seen her look so sad. If it was just about me, I wouldn't care what happened. But you're worried what happened to the rest of our classmates. Without you, there's nothing to keep the school there. Which means, what will happen to all of the other students? I don't want to be a teacher, can't even fight for our own students, but I can't put the whole school in jeopardy. I don't know who told her this. Whoever it was, they warned her not to escalate things around Satoko's case. They threatened the existence of our school to make her obey, and pressure her with responsibility she couldn't take on her own. You know, yesterday, Oishisan told me something similar. In this exact same spot too, he warned me that if I kept escalating this, then I'd be fighting against the elders who still don't like the Hojo family, or something like that. He told you that? Well, he's not really wrong. Mion looked to the ground along with Chiye Sensei. Take me to your grandma, I will get on my hands and knees and I will beg your grandma for her help. Also for some of that ohagi, it sounds delicious. Everyone's a gloater, stop being fat. I always thought Chiye Sensei and Mion were stronger people. So seeing them both hanging their heads like this is hopeless. This is hopeless, made me feel like they were being pushed into a dead end and I hated it. I'll say this, they're both very strong, very courageous people. But they both have very fragile hearts. I don't blame them for that at all, in fact, I think it's precious. And something very special and valuable about them. In fact, it makes them of greater value. But it also means I should take greater care to try to protect these two. You were just at the Child Consultation Center with us. You told everyone to come again tomorrow. That's the Mian I came to this meeting with, so when did she get swapped with this week, Mion? When I said when did she get swapped, I immediately thought of one thing. The mayor took her outside the building earlier. Did he? I see, he called you out here to talk about this, didn't he? Well, kind of, ha ha ha. It felt painful to see her fake smile like that. She was only out here with him for about ten minutes. What the hell did he tell her that crushed your spirit? Mion, Chiye Sensei, the two of you are the strongest people I know. I respect you very much. I can't even imagine what kind of pressure you would, would cause you to change your opinions overnight. I didn't feel like getting mad at them. That's, yeah, same. Everything you said is exactly how I feel, Keiji. I'm not angry, you guys, nor am I disappointed. I'm not angry or disappointed. I'm just very appreciative of everything you've done. And I just I feel sad for the burden that you guys are having to deal with. And while I dislike that you're not able to help me as much as I want, I dislike even greater that I can't help you with what you're dealing with. They were just as passionate about saving Satoko as I was. Towards them, I felt nothing but pity. Maburo-kun? I don't know what to say. You don't need to apologize. I could feel an angry tone entering my voice. I'd had enough. Tell me something. Why do the old people in the village still hate the Hojo family that much? The dam conflict is over, Satoko is totally innocent, isn't she? Why do they still hate her so much? Who hates her? Whose fault is this? I'm going to have a chat with whoever that is. I don't think anyone actually hates the Hojo family. What? What are you saying? It's true that the Hojo family was the enemy during the dam conflict. The whole village believed that. But after Satoko's parents died, people started realizing that she was innocent. But no one ever came forward to forgive her. I can explain why. Shion! It wasn't just Shion who appeared. Rena and Rika-chan were there with her. They'd come out to check on me and overheard what we were talking talking about. Well, I am a terrible, terrible Solid Snake. To be fair, we all already knew this. Like I played Metal Gear Solid 3 once, and turns out, there's a way to fail through stealth. Cause there's a mission where you have to be able to get into an area without being detected. If you can't, then the door is locked. Anyway, I kept failing at it repeatedly. But I kept killing all the guards that kept catching me. And of course, I made it harder to, um not, but of course, I didn't leave the area in first. I don't remember the bodies despawning. So after I had a pile of thirty plus dead guards in one spot, the game no longer could load new guards to catch me. So I was then able to rescue the scientist I was supposed to. Cause technically, I can't be caught. You know, I can't fail at stealth if everyone who could possibly catch me is already dead. I then escorted the scientist across the pile of dead bodies. I mean, I basically made a shack carpet out of them. But I'm just saying. You guys weren't supposed to notice me leave. Would it have helped if I put a cardboard box on me? And overheard what we were talking about. After uniting to turn the Hojo family into the scapegoat, the village is still living in fear. But not because they're scared of them. They're living in fear that they'd end up connected to the Hojo family. They'll be made a scapegoat by the village too. In other words, if you help a member of the Hojo family, you might get attacked by the village, just like they did. They still feel that way years after the conflict. It is, is that true? Everyone was always so nice to Satoko-chan at school. Only the old people are involved in this. However, they're the core of the village. They all believe that the leader of the Sonosaki family, my granny, still hates the Hojo family. Then let me, and don't worry, I'll be polite. I will not raise my voice, I will not be rude, I will not say bad words, and I will beg respectfully your grandmother to forgive Satoko. Cause again, and I'm not gonna ask her to help, more so just for her to not be angry at Satoko anymore. But if she were to help, I would be instantly guaranteed of success. Her power and repute are that great. But at the same time, you know, it's entirely her decision what she does about anything. So I'm not about to presume that I can tell her what to do. All I can do is humbly ask for her understanding. But that's not true, Granny is also afraid. She thinks if she forgives the Hojo family, the other elderly people will lose trust in her. This is really complicated, so what do you mean? Hmm. So I need a way for her to be able to do this without losing the face. I mean, I could ask them all as a group, but then that puts more pressure on her. And I'm not trying to do that, but at the same time, if I could get the other old people to be on my side too. But at the same time, it's a huge risk and gamble that way. And it's also a bit disrespectful. How do I handle this? Hmm, maybe I should go through a proper channel. Maybe it would be more polite to go through Kimi Yoshi first. To talk to him and the other people at this meeting, and then go to Oriu. After all, if Oriu makes the decision simply by me asking her, then it could possibly make her look weak. But if I ask Kimi Yoshi them first, and I receive their blessing. But at the same time, would that make it seem like I'm trying to pressure Oriu? I'm not trying to make it sound like I'm pressuring her, I just I don't I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the best course of action here is, and I don't understand. But I think, given the situation, regardless of all this stuff going on, I'll just do what feels right. Which is, I'll just go see your grandma. And I'll just be respectful to her. And I'll just humbly beg her forgiveness for Satoko. I don't think there's any other option, other than nothing. And I refuse to sit by and do nothing. So I think that's my only choice. Who am I supposed to punch in the face? The truth is, no one really hates the Hojo family. They all think we should forgive them, but they can't come forward with that opinion. They're convinced that everyone else still hates the Hojo family. So everyone is misunderstanding each other. That's right, you can't ask all of them, you can ask all of them individually. You'll see that no one really hates Satoko. Her parents' death marked the closure of that hatred. After her parents died, my grandma told everyone not to bother the Hojo family anymore. However, she didn't tell people to forgive them. That's probably because of my father. Rika-chan's father, why is that? My father was so laid back that people started saying he didn't deserve to be a leader in the village anymore. Rika-chan's dad was a very relaxed guy. I think that helped him calmly resolve things, but at the same time, people who were burning with anger about the dam project were looking for a more aggressive leader. So my granny came forward and acted as one. In order to unite the whole village. And because of her role as an aggressive leader, she can't publicly announce that she's going to forgive the Hojo family. Yeah, old people put a lot of stock into not changing their minds. She can't reverse her policy so easily. But that's terrible. People refusing to forgive Satoko-chan and then blaming it on everyone else. Hmm. I believe ancient Persia had a rule that anytime a king passed a law, the king could not un- the, the king couldn't revoke his own law. There was no such as a repeal. You know, if a king made a law, it was a law. If he made a declaration, it's what had to happen. Even if the king himself the next day decided that, oh no, that was a terrible idea. The king himself wasn't allowed to change his mind. Whatever the king said was literally the law of the universe. And you can't undo the law of the universe. But you can make additional laws that circumvent the original law. For example, under those rules, if a king were to declare that a group of people would be allowed to be killed, well, he can't revoke that, the king can't undo that law. And a law that says you can now kill a certain group of people, well, that law is there forever, for all eternity. For even after that king is dead, no future king can repeal that law either. For example, if that, if there was such a king in the land of Hinamizawa, and the king passed a law saying that Satoko, that anybody in the entire city could kill Satoko, well, that's the law forever. Even the king who made that law can never, ever, ever change that law. Nor can any king after it. However, you can make additional laws to circumvent the first law. For example, if you're a king, and you made a law saying that a certain group of people are to be killed, well or are allowed to be killed, you can't undo that law. But if you then decide that you think it was wrong, and you, that you made a mistake, well you, you can't undo it. You can't change the law, and you can't, and no king in the future could ever change that law. But if you made a law that says all those people can then be targeted and attacked and killed, even though you can't repeal that law, you can then give that group of people a bunch of weapons. And armor. So even though you can't repeal the law saying that other people are allowed to kill them, you can however give them weapons to defend themselves. It'd be like, if there was a king that said that anyone in the city could kill Satoko, well, that law is forever. That law is more permanent than the stars in the sky. But you can however give Satoko and all of her friends and those who would want to protect her guns. And you might say, this sounds like a really terrible system. And I have to say, I agree. But that's just the way that system is. For example, at one point, there was a like amendment, that was a prohibition against alcohol that later got repealed. In that circumstance, that system is, well, you would never be, ow, my foot is cramping. Ow, 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 why? Why? Ow, ow, ah, it's getting worse. Ah, fucking, ah! Ah, shit! Ow, that fucking hurts! Ah! Ow! All of the muscles in my ankle are not supposed to be in that spot! Okay, that's, I think we're good now. That, that wasn't cool. I did not like that. Fuck! You guys get the idea. Just saying, you'd have to reclassify what counts as alcohol, and reclassify what counts as selling and distributing. So you would just, heck, I think Trump is about to have a announcement where he's gonna reclassify marijuana as a less, well... They can't forgive her because they're afraid of what other people might think, that's awful. During the dam project, a few households actually thought it would be fine to vacate their homes, since they were getting compensation money from the government. But they couldn't say that out loud. The Hojo family however came forward with their opinion and announced that they were willing to vacate. Those households gained courage after seeing the Hojo family, and they almost established a group of people who agreed to leave. I'm sure you understand this after today, but in order effectively to protest something, everyone has to have the same opinion. It's important that the whole village is on the same page. Before the dam project, conflict, Hinamizawa was tearing itself apart instead of waging war. They said that it was because my father was such a lazy leader. He never thought they'd actually build a dam. He believed that we could reach a peaceful resolution just by negotiating. People thought that was why some families started agreeing to leave. Supporters of the plan to evacuate, that sounds strange. This is the first time I've heard of that. People in the village always said that they supported the dam project. She's right, they usually claim that their enemies supported the project itself. It sounds worse if you call them dam project supporters than if you call them evacuation supporters, doesn't it? If you call them evacuation supporters, it makes it sound like they're peaceful people who don't wanna fight. By calling them dam project supporters, it makes it sound I see, it sounds more like a group of bad people trying to submerge the village underwater. It's all about appearances. When did you get here? Is everyone listening? Coach had appeared, and forty other people. He came outside after noticing how long we'd been gone. The village in Hinamizawa was brimming with a sense of unity. Mr. Farude was not able to unite the village. The Sonosaki figured that they could seize power if they were to take charge of that unity. I'm starting to understand now. Let's phrase it a different way. In order to unite the village, the, they attacked the Hojo family who betrayed their sense of community. They used them to intimidate the other people. People became afraid of the Hojo family, so they changed their minds and started protesting against the dam project.
People became afraid of the Hojo family, so they changed their minds and started protesting against the dam project. They held that if you interacted with the Hojo family, you were probably a supporter of the dam project yourself. That's why everyone kept their distance from them. They acted like they didn't even see them. When someone from the family talked to them, they ignored it. Initially, they were targeting only Satoko-chan's parents, but eventually the whole family was seen as the target. As a result, her uncle and aunt were caught in the line of fire too. It's kind of ironic, that was the reason they started abusing Satoko-chan to begin with. Her uncle and aunt were not in support of the dam project, but because of Satoko's parents, they were also attacked. After Satoko's parents died, they were forced to take care of their two children. It finally makes sense, I can see the whole picture now. The dam conflict is over and Satoko-chan's parents are dead. I think the Sodasaki family should speak out and publicly forgive the Hojo family. But once again, there's an issue. Granny is afraid the elderly people here will lose their trust in her if she publicly forgives the Hojo family.
I'm not asking for forgiveness of the whole Hojo family. Just of Satoko. Like every other member of the Hojo family. You know, which is really just Tepe. I don't give a fuck about. I mean... We can publicly like crucify Tepe. We can like burn him alive in a giant wicker man thing, we can watanagashi him. You know, we could just cut out his intestines and fling him into the river. You know? You know, the original purpose of the watanagashi. The cotton drifting festival, that's also a fucking double entendre for gut spilling. I'm just saying this. You guys can kill Tepe. I just want you to forgive Satoko. Heck, you guys don't even need to forgive Satoko. If you kill Tepe, then Satoko's good. You guys can still like ignore her, shit. Just... If you guys really have such a huge issue, then kill Tepe. I'm not sure if I'm being serious or facetious. Can I be both? Your sarcasm's non-binary. Everyone's like, "That doesn't make sense." I don't care! Trying to be funny. Or at least not depressed.
I heard this directly from her, so I'm sure that's what's happening. All she could do was tell everyone not to bother the Hojo family anymore. When she dies, she wants the next thing we had to officially declare the end of the dam conflict and stop discriminating against the Hojo family. My mom knows about this too.
I heard about it from her, actually. It's just the old hag's stubborn pride. Let me ask you this, it sounds to me like the mayor and his people threatened Mion and told Chiensensei they'd close the school. How about them? Do they still have bitter feelings toward the Hojo family?
It's ridiculous. Even Uncle Kim Yoshi thinks no one in the village hates the Hojo family. It's just sad that the dam conflict hasn't completely ended for these people. They're still afraid of being bad-mouthed behind their back if they interact with the Hojo family.
But people like you and Rika-chan interact with her?
I'm young and I don't have many ties to the town council either. Plus, Rika-chan is special. She's the reincarnation of Oyoshira-sama. Oyoshira-sama is the one who brought humans and demons together, which means she was able to live with Satoko even though Satoko's not accepted by the villagers. After hearing all this, I'm beginning to understand how difficult it was for Satoko to live in this village. She always acted bright and cheerful in school. And in the club. I thought that was her whole world. But I had no idea how she felt when she was walking around alone in the village. She probably went grocery shopping even knowing that people were going to ignore her. She felt the coldness from them, but she was standing strong on her feet. I had no idea she was going through something like that. I knew she went through tough times during the dam conflict, but I had no clue that she was struggling to this day.
What a sad story, and the whole thing is just nonsense too. Do you feel that way too, Rena? I feel exactly the same.
No one feels bitter towards Satoko-chan. But everyone is afraid that something bad will happen to them if they interact with her. Whose fault is this? No one's? Is the land or society making them think that way? It's no one's fault, yet they're so worried about everyone else's opinions, they can't forgive her, huh? Yes, that kind of atmosphere is great when the wind's blowing in a good direction. People would act kindly and help each other. But the case of the Hojo family is totally opposite. It's spreading like a mold and no one can do anything about it. What do you do if a rotten tatami mat? You have no choice but to toss it out and get a new one. So the mayor is pressuring us not because he hates Satoko, but because he thinks that if he lets us run free, someone who doesn't even exist might talk badly about him. So that's why he can't leave us be? I call that someone the curse of Oyoshira-sama.
Okay, so if I go to Kim Yoshi and the other old people, they'll be worried about each other and about Oriu. Which means my best bet is still to go to Oriu, because even though Oriu is concerned with the everyone else thinks, Oriu is still a strong leader and the most confident person in this whole group of old people. Which means she is the one most likely to take the courageous step of actually publicly forgiving Satoko, if I ask. The others would be too intimidated of each other and of Oriu. Oriu however is, at least got more strength and courage than all of the others combined. So Oriu would be the most likely to take, you know, that bold step. Whereas everyone else might be too scared. Everyone is afraid that someone, of that someone, even though he doesn't exist. But that someone doesn't exist and they're not a real person. Shion's theory sounded interesting. Everyone follows the rules because they're afraid of that someone. However, even the leaders of the village are afraid of the same thing. Everyone in the village has followed the rules because they're afraid of someone who doesn't even exist. They still follow the rules, the dam conflict, and they'll be cursed if they forgive Satoko. Who the hell is that someone? They can only call it the curse of Oyoshira-sama. Oyoshira-sama cursed the Hojo family because they supported the dam project. Again, we have the reincarnation of Oyoshira-sama here with me. I mean, does it count for nothing that the actual reincarnation of Oyoshira-sama you know... is saying to forgive her? They still believe that, and Satoko's struggling because of it.
Oyoshira-sama will not curse Satoko. She thinks- She thinks Satoko is adorable. Please don't use her name for something horrible like that.
I wonder what Han Yu's saying or doing right now, is she even here?
Rika-chan made a sad face. She's the shrine maiden for Oyoshira-sama and the reincarnation of Oyoshira-sama. I don't think there's a curse in this village at all. Everyone is just convinced that there is. If that's the case, this isn't the Child Consultation Center's fault at all. The whole village bears responsibility.
Yes, I think so too. I thought appealing to the Child Consultation Center would solve the problem, but that's not going to do anything. A rotten tatami mat, huh? We can't just clean the surface, even if the consultation center does save Satoko. That's nothing but a temporary fix. I guess we need to throw away the rotten tatami mats so we can save her for good. I think those tatami mats are all assembled nearby.
I agree. Most of them are within twenty meter radius of here.
Hey, K-chan, Rena, what are you guys going to do?
Mion. You're deeply involved in the village. I know you feel hesitant to save Satoko as one of the leaders here. I understand why you and Chiensensei almost gave up under the pressure. But I have nothing to lose.
Mabura-san? Are you really going to- Right here? I'll be respectful about it. I'm mature. But I'm going to say things. But don't worry, I'll be polite as long as they are. And I won't raise my voice as long as they don't. I'm going to do it. I'm going to get rid of that rotten tatami mat. Will you join me, Rena?
Yes. I'm tougher than you think.
Heh, I know. But you should settle down just a little bit. Remember, we're not trying to threaten them or kill them. We're simply here to talk. I just wanna have a conversation with them. That's all. I just wanna talk to them.
I feel like you could blow up a school if you got too serious.
Haha, I think you could beat up someone with a metal bat if you got too serious. Ha, 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 ha! We're both pretty tough, huh? Welp, let's go.
Yeah, let's go.
I understand your position, Mion. You don't have to come with me, just leave. If you think things are going to get out of control. This is more dangerous than any club activity. I'm damn serious about this. As the next head of her family, she shouldn't agree with me. But she stared in silent approval what I was about to do.
Okay, if you're going to take that risk, then I'm coming with you too. Yeah! I'd hug you if I could, but you're a two-dimensional sprite. Heh, that's the way. Just watch how I'll take care of this. What about you, Shi-chan? Fortunately, I have nothing to lose either. I'll support you guys. Chiensensei, Mr. Principal, I understand your stance. We're not in school right now, please forgive what we're about to do now. You're right, I'm not your teacher right now. The principal and I will entrust- will- our- entrust our will to you. I'm supporting you guys too. If they want me out of the village, I'm willing to close down my clinic. It's only natural for a master to sacrifice everything to save his future maid. Ooh, I can feel everyone's power flowing into me. Yep, we're getting the spirit bomb ready, guys. I'm not even going to try and cool down. I need to be fired up or something like this. As I turned back, I noticed Oishisa-san and my dad. I didn't know how long they'd been standing there.
Nufa, you seem excited about something, Mabura-san.
Oishisa-san, you told me last night that there are some things that a man can't give up on. We have to take a chance, even when it's risky.
Keiji, don't stop me, Dad. I know it's important to be polite, but I need to do this for my friend. I'm not going to stop you.
Huh? He gave me a big smile. I've never seen my dad smile like that before.
I believe in what you just told Oishisa-san. There are some things that a man should not give up on. You'll encounter something like that in your life sooner or later.
Okay, I know I'm dealing with a serious thing right now, but were you and Oishi just hanging out as buddies? Subject for a later time.
If this is that time, then I'm not going to stop you.
How Keiji's kun's father is so cool.
Of course, he's my dad. He's at least half as cool as me.
Heh. I'm not from Hinamizawa. I can't take either side, but I'll be watching you closely, Mabura-san.
When it's make or break, the game, take the risk and discard the middle. Discard from the middle, wait, is something my old friend used to say.
The one who got murdered, yeah. You know, I do like this version of you better. Right now, we're in chapter seven, the Minagoroshi. And in chapter three... Well... I was in a hole and you were kicking me in the face. I didn't like that. Getting kicked in the face is terrible. Huh. Just noticed. Look at the frame of his face. He looks like Elvis Presley.
You can't compromise once you make a decision. If you're going to forfeit, do so immediately. But if you're going to fight, be confident in yourself. Majang uses double-double scoring after all. Even if you get a small amount of points several times in succession, you'll lose if someone scores a lot of points all at once. You just have to be confident when you're ready to fight.
Do you play Majang too, Mabura-san? They start talking about Majang together. Heh, 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 this is going to be interesting. Someone from the committee came out and told us to come inside for the meeting. It was time for it to start. Alright, let's go inside. I feel like we're finally getting up on that stage. No wonder we felt something was missing at the Child Consultation Center. Yeah, this was supposed to be the stage all along. We were fighting with the wrong people for the past three days. Let's go. Someone pulled my shirt, it was Rika-chan. Keiji? You're not only Satoko's best friend, but you're also a member of the village's three families. You can just watch what Rena and I are going to do. But if you're willing to help us save Satoko, I want you to support us. You're going to try and change those hard-headed men?
I'm going to change them. I told you before, fate is thinner than a piece of paper. I'll tear it down with ease.
Ow, ow, what is going to happen? Why do we get the impression that like, Rika's just gonna pull out a knife, like, okay, forgive Satoko or I stab myself in the neck? They're calling the traditions of the village the curse of Oyoshira-sama. Shion sure has an interesting theory. Is Keiji going to smash it in two? Can he destroy the curse of Oyoshira-sama? He will break it. Keiji has the power to break everything. It's not just Keiji's power though. Because everyone is working together, Keiji's able to break everything, break anything. This energy is more powerful than Lucky Six on the die. It's not luck, he's destroying fate with his own two hands. Everyone followed Keiji and entered the assembly hall. I followed in after them. I'm going to do this. I'm going to do this with Keiji. If this doesn't work out, that's it for me. I'm going to give it my very best. Let's break the curse in two, underside. A civil servant's preparations. I see.
We're good as long as we know that the town council and Rukafushi Guardians aren't involved. Please take care of Satoko Hojo-san's case without worrying about it too much.
I will. I'm glad to know the whole village isn't backing them. I wouldn't agree with them if they were, though. No matter who was pulling the strings, we must treat every case equally. This whole odd rule that we have to give Hinamizawa special treatment is only due to the precedent set when we let threats influence us before.
Well, you're absolutely right, sir, but please continue to work on this case. The manager of the municipal government assured us that the town council has nothing to do with this petition. It's a problem that our organization is so afraid of, one tiny community. As a manager, you should think about that a little.
Yes, I'm sorry. Anyway, I'm glad to hear that the village isn't supporting them. You must act the same way even if the village does support them, no matter who is behind the scenes. Please be very careful with Satoko Hojo's case. Don't try to give her any special treatment, you understand? Everyone's an asshole. Excuse me, I have something to say before the meeting starts. They all knew immediately that I was going to say something about Satoko. I guess they weren't just old for show. Oh, Keiji-kun, today is our final meeting before the festival, so can you bring up your personal issue later? I ignored him and continued talking. If you have something to say, just tell me directly. Don't go through Mion or Chiensensei. I don't like it when people are so indirect. Let's talk face to face. Everyone went quiet. Nobody there wanted to be involved in a conversation about the Hojo family. Everyone here knows that Satoko Hojo is practically being confined by her uncle and suffering at his hands. While I don't care that you're not proactive about helping her, I'm sure that some of you don't want any trouble, but we're different. Satoko is our friend. We're fighting as hard as we can to save our friend from danger. However, Keiji-kun, we're aware of that. All we're saying is that you've done enough to the Consultation Center by now. Is there a problem if we continue our appeal?
Of course there is. It's a big problem too. Someone with a stern voice spoke out to me.
Heh, I'd gotten under their skin.
Then what is the problem? Can you explain it to me so a child like me can understand? The dam conflict ended ages ago. The age of banding together and storming public offices is over. The subject wasn't even Satoko anymore. All they had to offer was a bunch of excuses. I'm not asking about your past, and the dam conflict has nothing to do with this. This is my war. So if you're gonna partake in my war, well, let's make it clear, if you're my enemy or- Then let's make it clear, if you're my enemy or my ally, which is it? Are you my allies or my enemies? Mutter, mutter, mutter. Listen to the things that come out of this boy's mouth. Young people these days don't know how to be polite. Oh, I could have been so much less polite than that. This whole room, the whole room lit up and started filling with the smell of gunpowder. I- However, none of my allies let themselves get swept up in commotion and maintained their harsh stares. Those expressions made me feel as though I had a million supporters.
Those expressions made me feel as though I had a million supporters behind me. I will say this, if Oriyu comes out, I will still bow and humbly ask for her forgiveness for Satoko. I was standing in front, only as their representative. It wasn't my fight alone. This was everyone's fight. Because of that realization, the fierce look the old people were giving me didn't intimidate me at all. Keiji-kun, this is not about us being your enemy or not. Our village fought with these officials during the dam conflict. However, I do understand that this has nothing to do with that. The dam conflict is a thing of the past. I don't care what you thought about that. I'm talking about me, my friends, and Satoko. I never asked you about the dam conflict. Ever thought of getting your ears checked, old man? Why, you? How can you talk to your elders like that? You disrespectful little brat. I'd like to have a word with your parents. My dad, standing behind me, gave an apologetic and bitter smile. Pardon me, I'm his father, you see. You're his father? How could you raise him like this? Ha ha, I guess I'm not a very good parent. I'm not sure if I raised Keiji the way I was supposed to. My dad paused. In the next moment, however, his expression changed to a glare. However, a single man known as Keiji Mabura is standing here before all these faces. The voice is appealed that something about this doesn't make any sense. I don't care if he's my son or not, he's only making his assertion as a man. So I don't think there's really any reason to be talking to me here. Silence filled the room, as the old people sat there with their mouths gape. Oishisa-san broke that silence with laughter. You've got plenty of pride, don't you, Nufu-ho?
Um, my name is Rena Ryugu. Can I ask something? I don't understand the logic of how the dam conflict being over becomes a reason we shouldn't make our appeal at the child consultation center. Would you explain that to us in detail? Rena's voice remained perfectly level, as though the matter didn't concern her. However, I could see the fury in her eyes. I was probably the only one who noticed that fury. The old people seemed like they'd rather deal with her than me. What is this, bad cop, good cop? Rina-chan, this village has no reason to fight with the government now that the dam conflict is over. During that time, we did fight them too. But after the conflict was over, that's water under the bridge. So our village reestablished relations with the government. Hinamizawa is not an individual country. We're just a small village in Japan. The government is taking care of us. That's why we need to try and get along with them. You're right. It is important for our village to have a good relationship with the government. Listen to Rina-chan, she understands us at least. Mabura's boy ought to learn from her. I heard little bits and pieces from the noise of the crowd. Yep, that's definitely true. Hinamizawa has been trying to fix its relationship with the government ever since the dam conflict ended, exactly just like Mian-chan said. The old men cheered, however, Shion was the next to open her mouth. That's why the town council and the government officials are best friends now. In fact, two officials always come along on the town council's annual hot spring trip. They get paid to participate too. The trip itself is mostly paid for with tax money, isn't it? Oh, and I know so many other things. Like the donations for the new year and end of the year parties, as well as the vast financial aid the town council receives for festivities. The upcoming Watanagashi is one of them. The government is putting millions of yen into subsidies and aid. They're the ones who pretty much pay for the whole festival. Ever since the conflict added, ended, the festival has been getting bigger and bigger. That's because we're receiving money from the government officials. So if we get in trouble with them, we might not be able to hold a festival next year. That's why Hinamizawa keeps kissing their asses. Isn't that right, Uncle? Shion-chan?
How do you know all that? Ha ha ha, I switch places with my sis sometimes. What the hell? That's a ridiculous story. I still understand why you're against what we're trying to do. Rena, will you sum this up for me? What are they saying?
Well, basically, they're colluding with the government officials, so they can't risk upsetting them. The whole room went into a panic after Rena summed it up so simply. Some of them were ashamed that we hit the nail on the head. Some of them were enraged by our ignorance. And some of them were simply angry about our disrespectful attitudes. All of them combined to throw the room into a chaos of chattering and stomping. Be quiet, be quiet. They all settled down after Kimiyoshi raised his voice. By the time they quieted, the mayor had a terrible look on his face.
Keiji-kun, the relationship between the town, the council, and the government officials has nothing to do with this. You're just sidestepping the issue yourself. There's no point in mixing the two up together. Listen, we won our battle against the dam project, but we're all labeled as a nest of troublemakers. And yes, we were taking advantage of that image during the conflict. However, now that the conflict is over, that image is working against us badly. We need to try and repair it, otherwise this village will have no future. Do you understand? It's not just about being your enemy. It's much deeper than that.
In other words, you're saying that if K-Chan rallies everyone to action, then the friendly atmosphere we developed will be ruined? The old people nodded as Mian spoke. They were assuming that Mian was on their side. Me-chan, what do you mean by the friendly atmosphere? Does that mean we shouldn't seek help for a poor innocent girl who's being abused? They're trying to say that the child consultation center is doing their job already, so they want us to stop interfering. Given their position, the officials can't say, "Leave us alone" that strongly. So they're asking our village to deal with the matters for them, since they're granting us a lot of subsidies. Oh, so what you're saying is the town council is the government's lapdog.
Hey you, watch what you're saying. Be a little more respectful, why don't you? Why don't you watch what you're saying? I hope you're not refusing to help her just because Satoko is the daughter of the Hojo family. That's not it. We're not saying anything about Satoko-chan. We're just telling you to take a look at the bigger picture and to show some more restraint in your appeals. The child consultation center isn't ignoring you. I'm sure they've taken your huge protest into account. They've already understand your point. We're just saying that you're carrying this way too far.
Keiji-kun, I just saw something really interesting. See? Look at what's in that picture frame over there. Rena pointed at the wall, and everyone followed the direction of her finger. There were very many different picture frames all over the wall of the assembly hall. They mostly had to do with the dam conflict and were usually about glorifying the Onokafushi Guardians. Rena was pointing at a framed article. Kimiyoshi-san wrote it way back when he was the leader of the Guardians during the dam conflict. Look at the middle portion there. We attempted peaceful negotiation, but the government and their marionette, the president of the electric company declined. They have trampled on our village's democratic movement and our native land with indescribable atrocities. Meep. That's what Kimiyoshi wrote for the dam conflict memorial. He wrote the same thing on the monument too. Everyone knew why Rena had brought that up. I could hear them all gulping.
They attempted to negotiate peacefully with the government, and it's marionette, the electric company. What's this? Are you sure they don't mean the Hinamizawa Town Council instead of the electric company? Still, marionette is a difficult term. Do you think the people understand what that means? Could someone explain it to me?
A marionette is like a puppet. It means that while they're supposed to be an independent organization, they're actually being controlled as though they're dancing on strings. Oh, that sounds like the perfect word to describe Hinamizawa right now. Ha ha, yeah, that is perfect.
What are you saying? We're not their marionette. We're just trying to cooperate with them. Calling us a puppet is just splitting hairs. But that's what you just stated. You clearly told us that you want us to stop, not because of Satoko, but for the sake of the village. You said there was an issue because the village needs to maintain a friendly relationship with the government. Don't tell me that you didn't say exactly that. You did say it, didn't you?
Mm-hmm, I heard him. He said it had nothing to do with Satoko-chan.
Mian, I thought there was a saying in this village, something about how the whole village comes together for one villager. If there's one person coming, two should throw rocks at him. If there are two, four would do so. If there are eight, sixteen would fight back. If there's a thousand, the whole village should stand up and fight. If one person is abused, the whole village is abused. We all work together for that one villager. That's the unity of the Guardians. The unity of the Guardians is stronger than rock. That's what their leaders said back in the day. Ah... Mayor Kimiyoshi used to be the head of Onokafushi Guardians. He crossed his arms and started to groan. There were many things he wanted to say, but he knew that none of them would make him look good. And so he continued to stay silent. When I moved here, Mian and Shion told me the valiant story of the dam conflict. But that unity didn't start just a few years ago when the dam conflict happened. I believe those traditions have been here for over forty years, ever since Japan lost the war. That's why I really respect those who fostered the unity here since that era, and I find them incredible. And more than anything, I'm impressed by the courage the Onokafushi Guardians displayed here in this picture frame. The government tried to pull many dirty tricks to submerge this village under the water, but the Guardians thwarted every one of them. Because of the efforts of those men, Hinamizawa is still here today. If they hadn't done anything, we'd be at the bottom of a lake right now. So I'm grateful that this village exists with its proud unity and beautiful scenery. I'm proud to call myself a resident of Hinamizawa. That's damn right! Someone shouted. It wasn't one of my friends. It was one of the elderly villagers. That's why we fight. We fight because we all live together in this village. If there's one person coming, two should throw rocks at him. If there are two, four would do so. If there are eight, sixteen would fight back. If there's a thousand, the whole village should stand up and fight. If one person is abused, the whole village is abused. Get together for one villager. That's the unity of the Guardians. Satoko Hojo is one of us. You all know how terrible her uncle is. You all know that we can't leave her alone with him for a whole month. We need to save her from her uncle right this minute. We need the power of the Guardians one more time. We need the spirits of the Guardians to reunite again. Rena and Mian applauded, and the applause quickly spread to everyone. I saw smiles creeping across the faces of the old people. However, they quickly wiped away all those smiles and just started discussing with their neighbors.
Keiji-kun is right. It's not like Hinamizawa has to obey the government all the time, but the dam conflict is over now. The government officials are taking care of us too. I wasn't aware of that. Are they really supporting us that much? Well, on a personal level, I agree with what the Mabura-boy is saying.
I can't approve of how the town council is operating. Keiji-kun is right. The village can't put pressure on him just because the government is telling us to do so. Mr. Mayor, we might not be able to support Keiji-kun, but I also don't think we have the right to tell him to stop.
Hmm... I don't like this Mabura-boy's attitude. He's way too disrespectful. You think you can get away with talking to us like that? Three scary old guys came up to yell at me. I raised my own voice and yelled right back in their faces. It's not about my attitude, it's about the soul of this village. Get out of here if you don't have the courage to stand up for one innocent villager. How dare you speak to me that way? Thwack! The big old guy smacked me upside the head. What do you think you're doing? Thwack! I hit him right back, and the room went into a panic again. Rena approached us. I thought she'd come to stop me, but she suddenly hit the old guy in the head too. What? What are you doing? Don't think you can get away with this just because you're a girl. He thwacked Rena upside the head. However, Rena talked back to him with a firm look in her eyes. If one comes at you, two should fight back. Isn't that the spirit of Hinamizawa? Since you hit Rena-san, four of us need to retaliate. Let me in on this. Keiji, your father's going to fight too. Everything you've said is right. If they're going to try and stop you of violence, I won't turn a blind eye to that. There are three people blocking Keiji's way. We need six people to fight them. Rikachaba, Rikachaba. I'm impressed to see that courage of yours, Rikachaba. Let me in too.
I too will be taking his side. Chiye Sensei stood up. I thought she'd given up under all the pressure. I was almost going to neglect my students. I prioritized myself even though I thought I'd do anything for them. I'm ashamed to call myself a teacher. Wearing a fierce expression, she stared at the mayor. That was her answer to the pressure he tried to put on her.
Chiye Sensei, I think that I overstepped my bounds as an educator. However, what Mabura-san, Mabura-kun is doing is the right thing. As an educator, I have to acknowledge the fact that he's doing something right. I can no longer tell him to stop. If I have your support, Chiye Sensei, then I have nothing to fear. Let me ask you people one more time. Is it more important to stay cozy with the officials than it is to save the life of one poor innocent villager?
You don't even need to ask them, K-Chan. This is no ordinary assembly hall. This used to be the headquarters of the Onokafushi Guardians. The people here were all members of the Guardians once. Nobody without their spirit would ever come to a place like this. Mian-chan?
Mr. Mayor, K-Chan's actions are embodying the spirit of Hinamizawa. The way he's trying to fight without fear is exactly what the Onokafushi Guardians were doing. I think it's shameful for this town council to tell him to stop if you're still gonna ask him to back off. I'm going to smash all of these pictures on the wall and set fire to the flag of the Guardians. Hmm... While the mayor did nothing but moan, somebody else raised his voice.
I'm going to support Mabura-kun. He may be disrespectful, but he has the right spirit. I agree. It's pathetic the way we're colluding with these government officials. Keiji-kun, don't worry about what anyone else thinks. Keep on fighting. Don't give in to the pressure. The assembly hall instantly filled with a great round of applause. Mabura-kun, tell us what's going on so far.
Very well. On the day Satoko was kidnapped by her uncle Chiye Sensei visited her house, however, he refused to let Chiye see her, and it was obvious that something unusual was going on. Chiye Sensei called the child consultation center right after that. That night, a social worker visited her house. However, they determined that there was no abuse going on, and they put her case at hold. This might be a normal way to handle the situation, but they don't know how dangerous that uncle is. For that reason, the five of us went to the child consultation center to let them know how urgent it was that she be rescued. They said that they take that into consideration, but they still didn't take action after that. We thought five of us was not enough, so the next day, we went along with more than twenty of our classmates. You took the whole class? K-Chan gave a very moving speech. He told them that they had to save their friend and not abandon her. If he was here during the dam conflict, I'm sure his charisma could have resolved it in a year earlier.
Ha ha ha, we all know too well how spirited this lad is. The Consultation Center was still not willing to listen to us on the second day. We made almost no progress. All they told us is that they were working on it.
No, Keiji-kun, you did make progress. They were so intimidated, they asked someone from the local government to check on our town council. The fact that they tried to persuade us to stop meant that what you did was working. You made progress. I see. I guess you could look at it like that. If they weren't scared of us, they wouldn't have acted that way. On the third day, we called all of our friends and gathered sixty people. This time, we got to meet at the head of the office. He'd listened to us, but he didn't say what their decision would be.
Keiji-kun, to tell you the truth, at that point, the council had already spoken to the officials and had made our decision to stop you. After the child consultation center confirmed that the whole village wasn't involved in the protests, they decided to just ignore your appeal.
That's what I thought. I could feel that from the way the head of the office treated us. It was obvious that they were just trying to get it over with. We're planning to go there tomorrow too, but I wonder if they'll even pretend to listen. They might not even let us in because they think the village is pressuring us to stop. Yeah, they think that the village is on their side.
The village needs to publicly announce that they're supporting Keiji.
I agree. Otherwise, they definitely won't listen to us again. We should do that. We should tell them that Hinamizawa is not going to stop Mabura-kun for what he's doing. Hmm... Personally, I don't want to complain about Keiji-kun's actions. However, it's complicated when I think about it from the town council's point of view. Even if we tell them that we're not on either side, they'll still think that we're on his side. That's tantamount to picking a fight with them. Well, if they're gonna think that you're on his side, then just publicly say you're on his side. Don't be wishy-washy and say, "Oh, we're not gonna get in his way" or anything. No, if they think that's gonna be tantamount to you being on his side, then just double down and like, say, "Yes, we are fully on his side." One hundred. But I still have to respect the opinion of the council too. I can't just decide this on my own. I need to get approved from all the council members. Most of them are here right now, so you say, but... Let's just be honest here. You're afraid that there are some among you who are against the saving of the daughter of the Hojo family, aren't you? The whole room sunk into silence. That was the heart of the matter. Everyone thinks that the dam conflict is over. You all told us that a few minutes ago. You also think that there's no need to discriminate against the Hojo family now that everything is said and done. However, you're still afraid of her family? You're afraid that you'll be bad-mouthed if you interact with the Hojo family?
Satoko-chan's parents were indeed the leaders, the evacuation supporters. But what crime did Satoko-chan herself commit? Personally, I don't have anything against her, but other people do. I don't have anything against her either. The conflict is over, and her parents also passed away. I don't hate her either, but I know there are some people who still do, yeah.
Let me ask you this. If you hate Satoko, please raise your hand. I'm sure no one will, yet you all still believe that interacting with her will make others speak ill of you. However, no one's going to.
There is nobody like that. No, that can't be true. There's one person at least.
Then tell me who it is. Tell me who told you directly that they hate Satoko. The room fell silent again. It had become obvious that they were all avoiding Satoko.
It had become obvious that they were all avoiding Satoko because of a huge misunderstanding. The Child Consultation Center won't do anything, no matter what we do. They're convinced that the Town Council is on their side. We won't be able to fight back until the council makes it clear that they're not supporting them. Kimiyoji, by any chance, do you need approval for someone? Ouch, you're right on the money with that one. The mayor forced out a smile. I had no idea what Rika-chan was talking about, but she must have hit the nail on the head. Who could it be, though? Who was that someone? If I could persuade them, the village would end up supporting us. Are you talking about... My hag of a grandmother? The Kimiyoji family has forgiven the Hojo family. The Faruda family has done the same, right? Meep, I'm one of the leaders of the three families too. Hinami Zawa has three powerful families who make all the decisions for the village. That's been a tradition since the time of Onokafushi Village. It's kind of an old tradition, but this was a road we couldn't avoid. So all we need is the approval from the Sonosaki family. I've heard that they have the most power among the three. Everyone knew that, but it was a taboo to speak it. It's something only I could say since I didn't have the ties they did. If we can persuade Meichan's grandmother, will the Town Council support us? What do you think, Mian-chan? I don't want to fight with Granny. But if she's standing between Satoko and safety, I'll have to. I won't be fighting as the next head of the family. I'll be fighting as Satoko's friend. Kimiyoji-san, please promise, if we persuade Mian's grandmother, will we have the council's support? Of course, no one would complain if it was the decision of the three families. Let me get this straight. You're all refusing to help because you're afraid of Mian's grandmother, right? You're all grown adults, good grief. That's what you say, but isn't Oriu-san terrifying? Ha ha, that's not true. I know Meichan's grandmother very well. Sure, she has a scary side, but she's not that bad. Keichun is scarier than her when he gets angry. Yeah, and Rena is even scarier than me. Alright, I'm going to persuade Mian's grandmother. Support us when we succeed. Actually, don't just quietly support us either. I'm expecting you guys to take action too. What do you mean by that? We want the Onokafushi Guardians to reunite. Are you going to let us kids do all the protesting? You want us to protest too? We can't do that. You should do that. We're going to tell those officials that we're going to fight against them. We need to do everything we can. If we're going to support Keichun on behalf of the whole village, we need to make things clear to them. We have to support these kids if we're going to be on their side. Once we decide to do that, it's no longer just... Maburo-kun's fight. It'll be the villagers' fight too. In that case, you should be our leader, Kimiyoji-san. There's no way the mayor shouldn't participate in the protest. Alright, I got it already. If Oriu-san gives us her approval, I'll act like a man. I'll help Keichun. Does everyone else here agree too? Aye! But you're not going to help him persuade Oriu-san? Ha 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 ha, fine. I'll come with him to persuade Oriu-san. The way he talks might be too immature for her. She needs someone who can talk like an old... I can be respectful! I'm sorry for being so disrespectful today. I really have to apologize to everyone. Don't worry, you said some good things. You broke up the collusion in one fell stroke. Your refusal to cave under pressure is the very pride of Hinami Zawa itself. I'm sorry for hitting you. I got pretty riled up. Nope, that was my fault. You did a good job too, Chiye Sensei. You're a wonderful teacher. I really didn't know that some people were still bitter toward the Hojo family. Probably, Oriu-san is the most bitter of anybody. However, according to Mian's, Oriu-san doesn't hate the Hojo family either. Really, the whole thing was ridiculous. Nefu, good for you, Maburo-san. I never thought you'd get the Town Council on your side. No, I don't have them on my side just yet. I need to persuade Mian's grandmother first. Oriu-san is like a dictator around here, but she won't do anything that would make her lose the trust of the villages. If you've already settled things with the Town Council, then it'll be hard for the Sonosakis to oppose you alone. You're such a great negotiator. You insulted them at the start, but then you gradually buttered them up. I uh, I did it the way my dad writes articles for his art magazine. That's the same style he uses. Ho ho, your father is setting a good example for you, huh? He's an artist, isn't he? I'd love to see his work someday. Well, ha 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 ha, my dad doesn't even let me see his work. I guess he can't show it to him either. What kind of dirty pictures is he drawing? Yes, Keiji's father is a hentai artist. Well then, let's go and see Oriu-san tomorrow night. We can't go right... What? Is she asleep? I didn't think it was that late. We can't go right away. Once she gets into a bad mood, she'll never listen to us. Is she already in a bad mood?